To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Please call the roll.
West, one, one. Drew, four, two.
Here.
Drew Worley, four, three.
Present.
Jeff Lucas, four, four.
Present.
Ryan Holmes, four, five.
Present.
Eric Howell, at large.
Present.
John Gabriel, Councilor tonight.
Here.
Mayor Cortover.
I'm here.
Amy Hendrick, Finance Director.
Present.
Tony Valerius, Service Director.
Here.
Can we entertain a motion to approve of the Maryland State Council minutes from the May nineteenth reading? Is there any, I'm sorry, additions or corrections? And if not, so move. Please call the roll.
West. Lucas.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes. Thank you. Under open to the audience this evening, we have Mr. Mark Williams. Please come forward, sir.
Everybody, how do you?
Yes, please, and you name an address if you would, please.
My name is Mark Williams, four eight seven four Pine Drive. So I came tonight hopefully to be educated about our streets. With the recent vote we had where some of the money is being directed in the city, I noticed on that subject for a long, long time. Been a resident on that street now for twenty-three years, and it's gotten worse as everybody knows. I know I'm beating a dead horse on this one, but I just came to kind of try to educate on what happened with the vote, what happened with the money, where we're going forward, and what you guys see as the future of our city streets. I hate to pick a nail. Dressing pie, having lived there and gone through the suspensions that I've gone through, the different tires that I've had to change. It's just gotten to the point where it's like, it's starting to get maddening to the point where I'm embarrassed to have friends come over, because the first question out of their mouth is, what is with your street? Family comes over, what is with your street? It's just, and you guys know it, and I understand that. I'm hoping to understand where the money went, where, what we're looking for in the future for our streets. If you guys could just help me with that up, it'd really be great.
Typically, the way it works is you come and present the information that you request from us or from the administration or vote, and then we will reply to you and give you that information as required. In fact, the very next section is response to the audience. So in some regard, I can turn to the administration in that, and they can give you a very minimal general overview, and then if you require more, you can contact them with the clerk's office, and then we can get you more detailed information.
This is on the same page, like something of writing to the clerk's office?
Or just stop by, there's minutes that are available from our discussions that we can give to you, or I can meet with you individually and discuss it if you would like.
That'd be great.
But in the meantime, under responsive answers, we only have this one. Would anybody like to take a brief minute and just update them on Pine View's status?
Well, I think Pine View has been estimated at council's request, and all we need is funding approvals from council to go forward.
And we have, that will be coming in future committee meetings, and we have transferred money into the road fund to cover some streets. It's not enough, obviously, to do it all, so.
Forgive my ignorance, so when we voted in this last voting session, the section there, I thought part of that was supposed to be the George Rams, am I mistaken in that? Or is that part of the general fund for roads within that last vote?
Well, not to get too much back and forth, but we would, this is going to be a lengthy discussion, unfortunately, this isn't the place for it. I will call you, and I'll be happy to have the clerk provide you with that information, so you have a detailed list of the things and where we're going in the minutes, and what's been voted on and what's been done. I'm happy, we'll figure that out.
I appreciate your time, everyone.
Sure, thank you. Okay, under correspondence, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We have a few pieces of correspondence, but first is a TRFO liquor license permit to Vermillion Sun East, EVA Chart Room, five zero two four Liberty Avenue, and that is from Huggies Coffee and Wine Bar LLC. We also have a Trex-type liquor license to Sir Market and Sundry's LLC by three one two Liberty Avenue, Vermillion, Ohio, from Lane Drug Company, EVA Rite Aid, Vermillion, Ohio. And then we also have an additional correspondence from Homertown that states, "I would hope a serious discussion of a bond issue for the roads would occur this month. Any November issue has to be done by August, I believe. There is a lot of data needed and some pretty severe and urgent need. If we wait six months or a year, the interest rate might remit a bit, but the cost of a contractor will probably increase more. I've offered to discuss with anybody, but I haven't heard much. Meanwhile, if council fails to ask by June twenty-first after three readings, there would not be an increase possible in council compensation. That is a prescription to try to assure we keep the pool of people able to serve too small to allow meaningful representation of the diverse interests of our citizens. Best practice would be to," I'm sorry, best practice would be an ordinance introduced now, respectfully, Homertown."
Okay, thank you. Under present of the council's report, these really, only a brief statement I would like to add to utilities, utilities itself. So this weekend, we had a subcontractor come through and run fiber cable for one of the cable companies, and as they were doing it, they were throwing the materials that they didn't need from it, wire ties, gloves, things of that nature, just literally to the side. And, you know, we start looking at that coupled with a telephone pole that was knocked out across from Speedway that took the better part of months and months to replace, and then another telephone pole across from the chart room that's taken maybe two years, it still hasn't been, it's broken, there's a pole in place, but the utilities have not been moved over. So I guess, in summation, what I'd like to do is put that on for discussion and maybe do some research and see what other communities do, if they incentivize utility companies to maybe do more as far as timeframe, cleaning up these old wires they leave abandoned, this type of material. I'd like to see how other communities handle that, so. And that's all I have under present of this report this evening. We'll start with committee reports. First up is Mr. Holmes.
Finance Committee, no report. Next meeting will be June ninth at six P M. Historic Design and Review, no report. Next meeting, this Wednesday, at six P M. Planning Commission, no report. Next meeting, this Wednesday, seven P M. Stormwater Advisory did not meet. No meetings planned for the future. That's the end of my reports.
Okay, thank you. Can we invite Mr. Holmes?
Oh, yes, thank you, Council President. Health and Safety, we'll meet June ninth in this facility at six P M.
Thank you. Mr. Worley.
I have no report for the Street Commission. Next meeting is tenth at nine thirty at Park Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Howell.
No report for Legislative. I believe the next meeting is the seventeenth, or I'm sorry, the sixteenth. You ordered, isn't it the night? I don't even change that schedule.
I did it, it's going to be the night.
Okay, so it'll be the night, sorry.
That's okay.
At six o'clock, and then Park and Rex met on the twenty-seventh, the pool minutes we found on the website, and they will meet again here June fourth, or June twenty-fourth at six P M.
Okay, thank you. And same with Streets, Buildings and Grounds, they will also meet on the ninth, and that concludes my report. Councilperson West.
Main Street will meet on June.
Thank you. Councilman Drew.
Border Zoning Appeals met on May twenty-seventh. There's three items on the agenda, all three passed. If you want to find out more about that, you can go online and see the minutes. They'll meet again on June twenty-fourth. Nothing for Utilities' report at this point, but it looks like you have Utilities scheduled for July twenty-eighth. Is there a sooner?
I believe June nine.
It's going to be June nine?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to get used to this new schedule.
I appreciate that. That concludes?
That's it.
Thank you. And next up, we have the Mayor slash Safety Director's report. Mayor Cortover.
Thank you, Council President Gabriel. Just want to make council and everyone aware that there is a lot of buzz pertaining to housing. I know it's not just Vermillion, but Vermillion is certainly among the places that's targeted for residential housing. Cahovenian Homes will open Phase Four of their Lighthouse Estates with twenty-four more homes, five of which are already sold, they just told me today. That's on the west side of Vermillion, off of Edson. I know several people bought beautiful homes in Phase Three. Even Cahovenian told me that they were surprised by how fast the twenty-five homes in Phase Four, or I'm sorry, Phase Three have sold. And Vermillion Landings on Sunnyside continues to do their studies, they're in touch with us, and they're planning in preparation for housing and commercial development, that's still in the works. Eve's Development announced that they are in the final stages of preparing plans for the old schoolhouse property on Decatur, that they will be submitting to the plan and commission, and that is a big improvement for a long vacant site. Yet another developer has asked to meet with Service Director Valerius, who met two weeks ago. They shall remain temporarily unnamed, but they proposed a multifamily unit concept in an area near downtown. They are experiencing, twelve of these going right now, and they are very serious about it. No timetable yet. They did a preliminary discussion with us, as most developers do. Every economic development organization I know in both counties warned us mayors that this area of Northern Ohio is badly in need of more housing, particularly with the potential for industry coming. And of course, the people who want to, of course, there's people who will always want to be part of a small town on a great lake and who have less composure. As Service Safety Director, I just want to remind everybody, as Chief Harton did, that this is Range Week, and it's up at the tactical range off, I think Cooper Foster by Baumhart. I always stop and bring some pizzas, and I encourage all of council to stop by and say hi, don't sneak up on them from behind and let them know you're coming. But they always appreciate the support, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the mayor this evening? Okay.
I just have something I'd like to say. In regards, your most recent article in the paper, it really rubbed me wrong with the jab that you took at this body. I think it was tasteless, and I think that a lot of it was filled with nothing more than opinion and not fact. And for the respect of this body and you, that's all I want to say, but I just wanted to be noted that I didn't appreciate it. I took personal offense to it, and we'll leave it at that.
All right, Councilman Howell, I appreciate your comments, and thank you for reading the article. Nothing in there that I said was not said at open council. It's all in minutes somewhere, but not everyone reads those minutes. So I took it upon my responsibility to make them aware of what goes on in council. I don't think anyone would object to people being reminded of what goes on in council, and if you have your own version of what you think they should hear, then please go ahead and share that.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor? Okay, moving along, Service Director's report. Mr. Valerius.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to make residents aware that the Sunnyside Road Phase Three reconstruction project will begin next Monday, June ninth. The project consists of the replacement and widening of Sunnyside Road from where the last phase left off near Shady Lake Drive to Liberty Avenue. There will be some storm, so we'll work on the project as well. The contractor is planning to implement a one-lane closure initially with the use of temporary traffic signals while they install drainage. Beginning June twenty-fifth, travel will be restricted to a single-lane, southbound only. Northbound traffic will be detoured. Access to driveways, mail, and trash pickup will not be interrupted. Construction is anticipated for the last sixty days. The Street Department had the dirt patcher back out today, and another crew was filling potholes with cold patch. The very wet spring has put us a bit behind on the road repairs, so I ask residents to be a little patient, and we will get to their streets soon. Asphalt contractors will be out soon preparing the large sections of roadway that have been disturbed from digging water main bricks, so please be aware as they may have some minor detours for short periods of time while they make these improvements. And then lastly, tonight, I just want to mention that the Distribution Department has completed hydrant flushing. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the Service Director?
Is there enough of these big potholes that we're putting cold patch in to do like some patchwork rather than just the bag stuff? Or is it not worth doing?
A lot of those holes, you mean like a big swath?
Like twenty, thirty of them, cut them out?
Yeah, sometimes when there's several potholes in one area, we've done it before. We've taken a swath out, we just had to go over that. So, yeah.
Would it be worth a while looking at it? Like, would it make a savings for us later on rather than just throwing cold patch in them for now?
Well, I think initially, let's get a cold patch. I just sat down, or just went from site to site with asphalt contractors. There was probably, oh, eighteen or nineteen sites this year just for main breaks, and some of those included quite a big area.
Sure.
But I do know what you're saying. We did it on Willow Drive last year, there was an area that was just really full of potholes down there, so we did that very thing, and if there's other spots in the city, I'm sure we can do the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Service Director?
Just, I think at the June ninth meeting, I want to see if we can get Parking Call the Sacks on to talk about it, Streets, Buildings, Grounds. Do you have any insight on that at all?
Parking and Call the Sacks?
Yeah.
No, I think that's really more of a police department thing.
Okay. So, I figured I'd start with you.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tony. Moving along, we have the Finance Director's report.
Thank you, Council President. You have this evening appropriation updates that were sent out earlier this week, or early last week, as well as the budget planning summary that shows you where fund balances are with the transfers that were approved on May nineteenth, estimated expenditures, and then the remaining cash balance available that can be used for projects that aren't part of routine budget items. And one additional appropriation that came through is Fund 505 for administrative expenses for one of the bond issues. Five hundred dollars is being added to that appropriation. Also, each of you received in your emails last week the 2024 financial statements, the support authority you had received earlier, and then the City of Vermillion School statements for 2024 were submitted to the Auditor of States as well in advance of today's filing deadline. A legal notice will be in the photo journal on Thursday. The unaudited reports have been placed in the Finance Department's page and will be replaced with the audited version once those come back from the Auditor of State later this fall. And as always, it's a lot of effort to get those done, and it's something that we take a lot of pride in the Finance Office that some of you were around to know, but those of you that weren't, this Finance Department team is the first in many, many, many years that even met the filing deadlines. So that's something that we're pretty proud of, and I'm happy to do that again for my last time around to do those. And also, we received a report from Rita, our 2024 reconciliation of service costs. And the reason for bringing these up is we frequently hear comments from folks and questions about why don't they do it in-house anymore? Why is it Rita? That type of thing. So just a little bit of insight into that. The final cost allocations for the twenty-four, 2024 tax collection services was 1.62 percent, meaning a dollar and sixty-two cents for every hundred dollars in income tax collected. That equals, with the 4.8 million dollars that was collected, seventy-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars for 2024. And that was to process just under a hundred thousand transactions that were handled by Rita for our return. So when you look at that type of information, by the time we employ a staff member, wages and benefits, purchase software, the additional audit costs, postage bank fees, all of that additional miscellaneous costs, we would definitely be exceeding what we're paying Rita because of their efficiencies that they have with their software. So that is just a little bit of miscellaneous information, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Finance Director? And tell your staff, very, very well done. Yeah, it's a rare beast to hear that paperwork gets filed on time on the size of government entities. Thank you. Moving on, we have the City Engineer's report. Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Council President. Want to give council some updates on projects. So the VOL project, contractors currently working on Guilford Road. All streets from Overlook West are completed for sanitary sewer installation. They still have Edgewater Boulevard east of Parkland, Mornington, Berkshire, and Clonan. Contractors cleaned up hospital and ceded streets from Parkland Boulevard to the west. Obviously, they'll have to come back and touch it up later after they've paved it, but it's a start. The contract is technically scheduled to start road paving the next week or two on some of the streets. Once we have the schedule, we'll share it with council. Based on the work completed to date, the contract is ahead of schedule. Per their contract, release date is November twenty-first this year, so we're going to be good. Last week, we had a pre-construction meeting for Lighthouse Estates Phase Four, as the mayor mentioned. Technically scheduled to start sanitary sewer installation next Monday the ninth, and they're shooting for completion by the end of August. On the agenda tonight, ordinance twenty-five, 2025 dash forty-four. On May twenty-second, the city received six competitive bids for Edgewater Boulevard Waterline Replacement Phase One Project. A little bidder for the project is the Joy Suburban Excavation of North World. This is the same contractor that's doing the VOL project, with a bid of seven hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents, which includes a contingency of ninety thousand dollars. The engineers' estimate for the project was nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, which included a contingency of ninety thousand dollars. Please note that the city received a grant of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from OPWC for this project. I would ask council to consider passing the ordinance by emergency so we can afford the project for the benefit of the residents. The paving for Edgewater Boulevard cannot be done until the water line is installed in December. I think we can all agree that the residents of VOL will be dealing with a lot of disruptions during this year, and the sooner this work can be completed, the better. And then obviously, we have ordinance twenty-five, 2025 dash forty-five, construction optionation, construction administration, Edgewater Boulevard, Waterline.
Thank you. Any questions for the engineer?
Hey, what? Chris, when is the deadline for using the OPWC line? Is it end of August?
We have it in our schedule. I think we're okay with that.
Good.
Mr. Howard, you had mentioned there's a couple streets that were going to get paved in a few weeks. Are they getting water line replacement as well?
They are not.
Okay.
Water's the only one that's being done. Contractors thinking about, sorry, Roland or whatever, or East. Yeah, so we want West East, but we can't go all, we're going to do it East, you know, maybe just for residents.
Is this the same project that you rebid last year?
No, that is Liberty Avenue Waterline Phase Four. And that one, you rebid?
I know it was coming up, but I wasn't sure if this was it, because that number might, wow.
City had a great price, and the bids as a result were very high.
Yeah, I mean, that come in, what, two hundred and thirty-four thousand under your number?
Right. Well, that contractor was there, so it made sense for them.
Sure.
They didn't get it changed.
And then what's, I'm sorry, what's the deadline as far as, what's the contractual deadline with this contractor?
Completion is, I think it's August seventh.
August seventh, okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you. Next, we have the Law Directors' report.
No.
Okay, thank you. We do not have anything under old business. Under new business, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss personnel, employment, employment, and hiring, compensation.
So, second.
We'll do this at the end of the ordinances. I don't anticipate any action being taken.
City asking for this, or are you asking for this?
I'm asking for this.
Okay. Just trying to figure out work.
Oh, no, no, this is.
Yeah, oh, gotcha.
It's been seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, please.
Worley? West, it's Drew.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So we will go on to the reading of the ordinances. Ordinance 2025 dash thirty-five is currently tabled. Unless we want to entertain a motion to take that off the table, we'll let that one go to the Legislative Committee. Okay, then. We'll continue with the reading of the ordinance, starting with ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
Third reading, ordinance 2025 thirty-nine. An ordinance transferring fund from one appropriation to another and/or appropriating funds not here to be appropriated.
And I want to entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-nine. So move.
Second.
And any discussion? The only thing I would like, just because I wasn't here at the onset of this, is what exactly is the plan, I guess? Anybody can give that.
Yeah, I'll come, try to give you some thoughts. So the plan was really a plant to seed here to start some kind of program or services for our seniors. We've never been able to provide any benefits or help or servicing to our senior population. And so the thought was that we can have a little bit of money, and the administration, either the current or the next administration that's coming on board, will look at things and try to find ways to coordinate with other entities and other groups and start providing some benefits to our seniors. It could be as simple as, you know, money to cut their grass, things to keep them in their homes, shovel their driveways, maybe have some events each month and get our seniors together and bring some partners from maybe some of the hospitals or some of the social service entities and have like a little fair for them. Like I said, this is just a plant to seed. It's only going to succeed if the administration, you know, takes it from here. I would strongly suggest that a committee be formed, some residents and maybe some here on council and administration, and we can come up with some ideas on how to best serve our seniors, and we'll see where this grows. That was my hope for starting this up.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm against any of that stuff. I would prefer that we wait until there's a committee formed and we have some kind of game plan idea before we move this money over into that fund. I don't see any reason to move the money right now. Not against anything that you just proposed, just I would like to see more of a firm game plan, at least the ball starting to roll before we move this money.
Great. I just, one of the towns I lived in for a little bit, St. Charles, Illinois, again, beautiful city on a body of water, not a lake but a river, also provided a very welcoming place for seniors to come, and I'd like to see that here because we do have an ancient population here in the City of Vermillion. And my thought is that, yeah, we can get the ball started and maybe eventually we eventually form a committee or building for our senior citizens, a community place where they can come. The one that I worked at in St. Charles was a place where they could all come and play cards and whatever, I mean, it provided a lot of extras for the citizens, elder citizens, so I think this is a good start.
Any other comments? We have a motion count of seconds, so please call the roll.
West, please. Lucas.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Worley.
No.
Howell.
Yes.
Gabriel.
No. Will you pass the motion? Thank you. Please continue.
Third reading, ordinance 2025 forty-one. An ordinance transferring funds from one appropriation to another and/or appropriating funds not here to be appropriated.
Okay, can we entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2025 dash forty-one? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? This is the old dump truck. I think this one's been talked in circles. Please call the roll.
If I may.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm just curious why we need to move money from the general fund into six oh one for this? Six oh one has plenty of money in that. Why it can't be just paid for out of that fund?
Point was to save that money that is there for projects. Point was to, um, save that money that is there for projects and, and large capital? Was I interpreted that as?
Anybody else? Okay. Please call the roll.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
West? Worley?
No.
Brew?
Yes.
House?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Please continue.
First reading, Ordinance 2025-42. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Vermillion, Ohio to enter into a contract with Norwalk Concrete Industries of Norwalk, Ohio for the purchase and partial installation of previous drafted groundrooms at Sherin Park. Authorizing the Finance Director to make payment in an amount now to exceed $77,460 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. That will go to a second reading. Please continue.
First reading, Ordinance 2025-43. An ordinance amending Ordinance 2025-6, adopted March 3rd, 2025, to make appropriations for current expenditures and to amend the 2025 certificate of estimated resources for the City of Vermillion, Ohio.
Thank you. That will go to a second reading. Please continue.
First reading, Ordinance 2025-44. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Vermillion, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Joya Suburban Excavating LLC of North Wilton, Ohio for the Edgewater Boulevard waterline replacement Phase 1 project. Authorizing the Finance Director to make payment in an amount now to exceed $744,899.50 and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we want to move this on tonight, or?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and go through the university on this one. Uh, the residents in that area have been disrupted enough with all the construction, and I think waiting six more weeks is, is not gonna help anybody. So, here's my motion.
Second. Second. Any further discussion?
If I may, Council President, I, I totally endorse that. I mean, uh, Council has approved the concept. We've gone out and bid, we've, uh, adhered to the rules of the, uh, of the bidding, and we got a good, good bidder who came in under budget. And, uh, for all the things previously mentioned, uh, those people down there are putting up with enough, and actually, I, I actually admire how they're, uh, sort of coming around to, and bring in, they've made friends with the construction people, so let's break all the iron and try to get this done already.
And this is to suspend the rules, so I'd like to make another comment. Uh, they're, uh, on top of what everyone said already, there's complexities with regard to how these roads are gonna be laid out and with the, um, Edgewater Boulevard, or Drive Boulevard. Exactly. And, and driving the trucks over roads that are just newly paved. So this allows the project to, to flow in a, a smart way so that we don't destroy the roads that we lay down in the lateral project.
And that, my, the reason for that question to the engineer was when those streets get paved in two weeks, is it gonna be an issue, or should we wait a little bit?
We're gonna control where they're gonna work. We're gonna tell them certain streets are not allowed.
Here we have a motion to suspend the rules, followed by a second. Please call the roll.
West? Worley?
No.
Brew?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can we have a motion to adopt 2025-44? Is it claiming emergency? So move.
I'll second.
Well, we've discussed it.
Additional discussion before we vote? Please call the roll.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
West? Brew?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Please continue.
First reading, Ordinance 2025-45. An ordinance sufficiently supplementing minimum contractual services to be performed by Graham Hall Engineering Surveying Company by virtue of Ordinance 2018-5, adopted January 2nd, 2018, by authorizing construction observation and contract administration professional services related to the Edgewater Boulevard waterline replacement based on project, describing that the firm shall be paid for additional services in accordance with the rate schedule set forth in the protocol dated January 3rd, 2018, and the total amount now to exceed $38,800 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Can we entertain motions to suspend the rule on Ordinance 2025-45? So move. I'll second. Just call the roll.
Brew?
Yes.
West? Lucas?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
House?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Can we entertain motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-45? Declaring emergency. So move. I'll second again. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was just curious. I'm definitely not complaining. Typically, we see roughly around 10% of the cost. I notice this one, it's right around 5%. So, I'm happy about that. Anyway, going forward, we can make them all around 5%. Why, why, why shouldn't it be just 5%?
Because it's based on a soon schedule. I don't have a schedule for the contractor. I'm assuming he's starting sooner. We should take August 17th. It's an hourly estimate. So based on those weeks, I'm breaking down saying, this is what I think it's gonna be.
Okay.
I'd just like to try to get that on record. Hold on.
Go ahead. I have a question. So, my question was, do we already have somebody from your firm down there monitoring the other projects, right? So, are you gonna put a second person down there? Is it gonna be the same person we're getting double billed for?
It'll have to be a second person. Because of the complexity with the sanitary sewer, you have to have somebody there with the connections, or, uh, if they're paving. So, there may be times we have one, but most likely you have to watch both projects at once.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Please call the roll.
Lucas?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Brew?
Yes.
West? House?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So, uh, we have some meeting dates. On June 9th, we will do all the committee meetings in this building. And on June 16th, we'll have a Vermillion Regular City Council meeting. Again, on July 7th, we will have a regular City Council meeting, followed by July 14th, where we will have all the committee meetings, again, in this building. And then July 21st, another City Council meeting, followed by July 28th, if needed, Streets, Buildings and Grounds and Utilities, if we have stuff for the agenda. So right now, they're tentatively scheduled, but it's, again, if there's no work to be done or no topics on those items, then we might change that as we go. So with that, we are going to recess into Executive Session. We don't anticipate any action following that Executive Session.
Oh.